Good evening and welcome to the May 8th meeting of the Chappell Central School District Board of Education. We've been in executive session since 5:15 discussing employment of a particular person, contracts, and seeking legal advice. Do I have a motion to bring this back to public session?
Go move.
I'm the second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please rise for the Budget of Allegiance led by Jane Shepherdson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, thank you all for coming. We've got a large meeting tonight, big, long meeting, and we've got high school that will do the president's report and superintendent's report quickly. We'll go through them. So, can I get a motion on 1.1.1 be resolved, the Board of Education approves the revised 2018-2019 Board of Education meeting calendar?
I move item 1.1.1.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Maybe I could just mention, so we had a meeting originally scheduled for the 22nd, but that is the Westchester Vow Sell Dinner. We're all, school districts go with their valedictorian, solditorian, to meet with other school districts with their Board of Education president. So, we had a conflict, so we had to move it to the following.
How many valedictorians can you bring?
Two. We drew a lottery, so Andrew has facilitated that, and Andrew and I, and I think Jane will be attending with our two winners. It's been multiple valedictorians.
Great. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion for 1.1.2, discussion about the 2019-2020 Board of Education meeting calendar?
I move 1.1.2.
I second.
Okay, discussion.
Looks good to me so far.
Alright, so I just would like to point out that we condensed our budget presentations in March to two dates, but we kept our third date in there in case we needed to expand it to cover three meetings, but we think that based on how we're planning on structuring next year, we'd probably be able to cover all our presentations in two nights. And you'll also see we had to move, just based on the way the calendar was laid out, we have quite a few Tuesday meetings going into next year, but as long as we publicize it in advance, I think we should probably be okay.
I just wanted to ask that we make sure that the schedule is looked at very closely before concerts and other events are laid on the calendar, especially where we have so many Tuesdays and Thursdays and non-Wednesday meeting dates.
Yep.
I mean, we've said that in the past where, you know, the board meetings take precedence. I mean, we shouldn't have people in the community have to decide between going to a board meeting and going to a concert.
Right, I think things got a little out of sync last year.
You have to work a little harder to make sure that that stays in sync.
The appropriate members of the public should not have to make that choice.
Alright, so we just wanted you to see it, and if you have any suggestions, then if you could let Lisa know, and then we can bring the calendar to you, maybe on the 29th.
I think on the 29th, we'll pass the calendar.
Okay.
So, I just want to clarify that there are no Thursdays other than the August 29th, right?
Yeah, that's the morning meeting. On Thursday, no, there's an October.
That's October 11th.
Because I would have conflicts on some Thursdays with West Putt meetings, but I don't see any... The only Thursday I see is August 29th.
And that's in the morning?
Right, that's in the morning, so...
I'm sorry, I just scrolled to the wrong one.
So, because you mentioned Thursdays, I just want to be absolutely sure.
If it's not on Wednesday, we noted the day that it was on.
You noted it, right. That's what I'm assuming. I just want to be sure.
Yep.
Okay. But again, you can, if you look at this, maybe compare it against your own calendar. If you need to make some adjustments, you can let Lisa know, and we'll send it out revised to you before the next meeting.
Okay. 1.1.3 be resolved, the Board of Education approves the Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association Proposed 2019-2020 Budget and Nominating Committee slate and authorizes the Board President to sign the WPSPA Annual Meeting Ballot.
I will move 1.1.3.
I'll second.
Any discussion? The only discussion I will have is Vicki Tip, who's on our board, is going to be hopefully elected to her third term as the West Putt president, and we thank you for your service to that organization as well. And normally, as I know, the West Putt only, you're president for two years at that organization, but because Lisa Davis, who's also an ex-school board member, retired school board member,
from Chappell.
Former school board member, she's the current director of West Putt, and she's retiring, so Vicki's going to take another year to ensure that we have some continuity there.
Well, it's a real pleasure to serve the organization. We represent 54 districts, 54 school boards in Westchester and Putnam Counties, and it's an organization that serves as support for school boards, support in advocacy and good governance, and so we encourage all school board members to attend our programs. And I just want to take this small opportunity to thank Lisa Davis for serving the organization for 11 years. She's done an amazing job, and we are now in the process of searching for another executive director. So, stay tuned for news on that. But the election will take place at the annual meeting on May 30th, Thursday, May 30th.
All in favor?
I... Thank you.
I have one other thing that's not on the agenda. We, at the last board meeting, we had a special board meeting to discuss the BOSI's budget and two members who were running for the BOSI's board. We unanimously voted to not approve the budget, and we abstained from voting from each of the members for the BOSI's board. We did not approve the budget because we don't feel the budget is in our best interest, feel we're not represented well in that budget. And the two candidates who are running are both fine people, we all know them and like them, but again, they're representing a position that...
Statist quote.
A status quo position that is not in our school district's best interest. I received a letter from, we all received a letter from James Ryan, the BOSI's superintendent, explaining, trying to understand what we did. Apparently, 18 districts are in our BOSI's section, 16 voted yes, one didn't vote, they were on break that week, so they decided not to hold a meeting and vote, and we were the only one who voted no. So, I think he was a little, I don't know, dismayed why we didn't vote for that. So, what I'm doing, I will write him a letter and send it off to him and explain to him our position, but I would also like to invite him to a board meeting so he can come and explain to us and the administration and our community, and maybe he can explain how they decide how budgets get passed and how districts get, quote, "passed." So, and for people who don't understand or are not familiar with this, every BOSI's district in the state passes, they allocate funds via a thing called RWA, which is an average amount of days that people use BOSI's. Our district does it half RWA, 50 percent RWA, and 50 percent true value of the home values. So, it's interesting that we do it that way. Anyway, we'll write that letter, and we'll see if Dr. Ryan comes and visits us. Thank you. Christine?
Okay, so I wanted to begin before we start our high school presentations by acknowledging 5.9 on the agenda. We have a scholarship establishment after one of our residents, Dr. Liu, and I know that we have two members of our audience today, Dana and Cindy, and I wanted to invite them up so we can acknowledge their gift, and then I'd like to, you know, consider, you to consider acting on that now. So, Dana, Cindy, did you guys want to share anything about why you wanted to establish this scholarship for Greeley? Very generous of you, so we thank you for that.
You want to come?
I have to ask you to go to the microphone.
You have to come to the microphone.
Thank you, everyone.
It's working.
It's working for the opportunity in a special way to remember my husband. My husband is the father of two children, of two Greeley guys. So, he was a scientist and passionate about furthering the young generations' interest in STEM and giving back to the community. We hope that this scholarship will inspire young people, inspire high school senior to pursue excellence, fear upon graduation. Thank you again.
Thank you so much. Thank you for generosity, and we are so privileged to be able to honor your husband in this way, so we thank you. So, I'm just recommending maybe you can consider acting on 5.9 right now.
Can we get a motion to accept 5.9?
I will move to accept 5.9 scholarship.
I will second that. Any discussion?
No, I just want to say thank you so very much, and thank you also for coming here to speak with us. We really appreciate your time and your contribution and the spirit with which you give back to the community. Thank you so much.
My three children went to school with Jeffrey, and they all knew Margaret, and I knew their father. Their father, we both worked at IBM. I mean, he was one of these smart engineering guys, and I was sort of like a little sales guy, but we had a lot in common, and I'm very excited that we can have a scholarship that perpetuates STEM.
Actually, I was a medical teacher at this high school on December 14th.
Right.
So, I was a medical teacher.
Thank you.
Thank you for your generous gift.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to now introduce Mr. Criscilia, the high school principal, who will facilitate our Greeley night, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ackerman and members of the Board of Education. We're really excited to be here and to show some of our work. I, as the principal, know my role, which is to bring the students to you and then get out of their way, so I'm going to be very brief here, and so you're going to be looking at some work from art and social studies. And what I believe you'll see is a commitment to active student learning, and what we mean by active student learning is, of course, our expectation is not that students receive passively information, but they create information and understanding, they debate, they research, they write, they create, they learn from each other. I think you're going to see dedication to personalized learning as well. You're going to see it, not every student is doing the same thing in every classroom, and as their classmates, they're involved in different projects, they self-select based on their readiness and interest. I think you'll see effort for curriculum alignment, where we're developing systems of skill development across courses, and then vertically as students move through a program. See a real commitment to design thinking, where students are building and iterating and drafting, receiving feedback, self-assessing, and then building again as they learn. And all of this is really supported by the new spaces we're developing here. So, I really believe it'll be obvious how in, with our artwork, how that's going to be supported and enhanced with our STEAM center, and with social studies, how it's going to be supported and enhanced with our renovations to Upper L with its open space and flexible furniture. So, I'd like to introduce Louise Brady, Katie Almanelli, and Chris Kazer from our art department, who are going to introduce our students and get us off rolling there. Go ahead. I'm switching the slides, okay. There we go. You want to do it?
Sure.
Did it get disconnected?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we just unplugged the cable.
Make sure you're pointing.
Thank you. Good evening. The images at the bottom of the slide represent a presentation we made to the board about two and a half years ago, talking about how we were updating art and how we were moving towards more self-directed learning. Regardless of what technology we use or what space we're in, it's really all about ideas. It's about the concept, and it's about where you can go by trying and risking and not being afraid. So, I have some students here to show you some of their work. First up is Helen Matthews, who will talk to you a little bit about her design process. She has a bicycle in the front that she's designed.
I'm going to show the bike off. She doesn't talk. Hi.
You're going to ride it? You're going to demonstrate?
Come on, just get on that. Do it.
Jeffrey, you can try it.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Helen. So, during first semester, I worked on this bike in industrial design with Kazer, and the goal of the whole, like, thing is to make a bigger, like, life-size bike, and that would ultimately be done on the CNC router, which would make it so, like, each side of the bike was, like, precise and accurate. But we started out with this to really, like, work out all the kinks and, like, see how it works. So, I started by just doing drawings and figuring out what I wanted the bike to look like, and then after that, I laid it out with tape on one of the tables, which is shown in the upper left, no, upper right, sorry, corner, and so I would, like, rip the tape off and then put it back on, and it was, like, to scale, so that helped when I eventually drew it out on the wood, and then I used, like, power tools and saws and all that stuff to cut it out, and drills and all that fun stuff. And we ran into a couple problems, but then we overcame those problems. So, in the bottom corner, the picture of the bike there, the hinges are completely different than what's here because we originally did it completely wrong and then had to cut the bike in half and redo it.
That's great.
So, yeah, because we didn't really think about it fully when we did it because it didn't bend.
Couldn't turn.
Yeah, it couldn't turn, exactly, because we put hinges on both sides, we sort of, like, locked it in place. But then, what was interesting, when we took one off, we were able to fold it in half, which gave us a new idea to have a foldable bike, so that's another idea that's still, like, running in our heads. And then, we eventually, like, after a couple tries, made a hinge that works, and now it's a little, like, paddle bike for kids. And then next year, the goal would be to make a bigger bike that is based off this because we've found out what works and what doesn't work, so now we're ready to do that.
Thank you, Helen. That's great. Excellent.
Our next student is Luke Mazzarski, who's worked with high tech and low tech and is very good at choosing which tool to use, and he'll talk to you a little bit about our spaces.
Hi. So, up on the board, in the middle, that was a tableside pendulum clock that I made with kind of contemporary design. I tried to use it like a black and white color scheme, and with that, if you notice, like, the body of it, the kind of octagonal shape in the center, I made that by hand using foam core and scoring the foam core and designing it by hand, but the stair steps running around it are, they were designed on one of the 3D printers, and the benefit of doing that was, when I initially started designing the stairs, I would design them by hand with the same material that the body's made of, but it was tedious, and it was, when it was finished, the stairs weren't accurate and they were all different sizes. So, the benefit of using the 3D printer was that I could design it on a platform called Fusion 360, and I could basically print out five or six stairs at a time, and they would be all exactly the same shape and size, and they'd be perfect. So, that's really an industrial design. We are kind of using a mix of both hand tools and electric tools like a 3D printer. The downside right now is that even with 3D printers, there's still a lot of wait time to use it because so many people are using it, using the printers, and so in a new space, it would be very beneficial to have more access to tools like the 3D printer and other tools that are being used by really everyone in the class.
Can you just move the chess?
Oh, yeah, okay. The chessboard on the left. So, I initially, I went through a bunch of iterations in designing this. I first designed it to be a seven-inch by seven-inch single board with very, very small pieces, and I was going to, I was trying to experiment with light by having a clear chessboard with lights indicating colors of tiles. That didn't work out, it was too small, so I redesigned it to be much larger, and again, I tried to experiment with black and white color scheme, and the chess pieces themselves have imprints of the shape of traditional chess pieces, so that was kind of a contemporary take on it.
Thank you.
Next, we have Wyatt Yates, who will show you some iterations. As he worked on finding his own personal aesthetic, he designed a series of chairs that you see right here.
Hi, guys. So, pretty much this whole year in industrial, I've been working on developing my own aesthetic for what I want to do for each project, and having my own aesthetic really helps me work towards a more focused outcome for each project. As you can see with a lot of my projects here, you'll notice that there aren't a lot of sharp edges or any flat sides to them, so as I was going through each project, you can see a lot of iterations of the egg chair up there. I noticed that I wanted to do something a little bit different from a lot of modern designs that you see nowadays. I wanted to completely eliminate all of those edges and make something more organic. And going from that egg chair, I went into my next project, which is actually the little chair over on the right, right there, and I tried to carry that same, that same idea that I had with me on the egg chair, thinking about eliminating all of the edges and kind of keeping it into one organic shape, and I'm even continuing that now going into other projects. I'm building a house right now, among other things, and I just try to keep that aesthetic going because it really helps me focus my work, and I think for me personally, it makes me, makes me feel proud knowing that, like, that's, like, what I build, you know, like, I have my own aesthetic that I can work towards, and when it comes out, I know that that's my project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Can you bring that aesthetic to the district office?
I think I've seen this in museum modern art. Can I just, quick question? What grade are you guys all in?
Roll juniors.
You're all juniors?
Yeah.
So, our next two speakers, Isabella Garcia and Madison Rosenthal, are not in industrial design, they are in our fashion design, our second growing region in the arts, so they'll talk to you a little bit about their design process, and you can see their products right up ahead with the unconventional challenge to the left and right of the screen.
Hi, I'm Madison, and I made the design over there, and originally, I had three different designs, and I decided I was going to make all of them, but I started out with something completely different, and then I decided I liked to use, I wanted to use the straws the most. So, at first, I didn't know what I was going to do with the straws, and I kind of developed the design based on the material. So, at first, I didn't have, like, the whole bottom part of the dress wasn't there, and as I kind of created the design, I just, like, whatever, like, fitted to the figure, I would, it didn't, like, match my original design at all, and I wanted to create something different because I usually create, like, neat, clean pieces and nothing, like, I wanted to create diversity in my portfolio, so that's why I decided to use straws and something different, and I really didn't want to use fabric because it was an unconventional challenge, so I tried to not use it at all, which I did, and the project was really time-consuming, but it was worth it in the end because it's something different and one of the pieces I'm most proud of.
Thank you.
I made the other piece that's up there. So, our challenge was to make something completely out of paper. We had the option of using muslin as a base, but I just, I wanted to try and make the entire thing out of paper. So, for my design process, the materials influenced the design, but the design also influenced the materials. So, when Ms. Almanelli introduced the challenge to us, she showed us a slideshow with different ideas, and there were three designs that stood out to me because they were very angular and they were very red, like, the color red, like, was really prominent, and they made me think of the Queen of Hearts, so that influenced my idea of going into a Queen of Hearts design, and this idea influenced the materials I used, both the red paper and the cards used to make the dress and the skirt. And the skirt, I had to redo a few times because I couldn't get the design how I wanted it to, but, and it did take a lot of time, but I think it came out how I wanted it to, a little bit differently than originally, than the original plan, but I'm very happy with it.
Thank you.
And you can see on the slide, they have the option of drawing by hand, drawing with Cintiq tablets with pens. It doesn't really matter to us what tools or space we have, it's all about the concept. It's nothing if it doesn't have an idea behind it, and a quote from Tim Brown, "Rather than thinking to build, we build to think." Artists don't sit and think about something, they think with their hands. We work and think at the same time, as you've seen from these students, it's very personalized and it's very much, it's a very broad array of things they can do. So, thank you for having us.
Thank you. So, usually, the board will ask questions of the students, so...
So, I have two questions. First of all, I don't know a lot about fashion, but I know those two pieces look a lot nicer than some of the pieces at the Met Gala the other night.
Is that a question or a statement?
That was a statement. I do have a question, so I can't, the first gentleman that spoke.
I'll do.
Luke, you mentioned that there's, like, a long wait time for the 3D printer. Is that because a lot of people want to use it, or is that because of the speed of the printer, or both?
I would say both. I do think that the amount of people that...
I would say both. I do think, the amount of people that want to use it definitely contributes to it more because there really is a huge benefit to using the 3D printer, especially for really mathem, where the structure that you're designing is very mathematically, it needs, you know, needs to be perfect, which is well-designed. The printers, for the most part, are, the speed is good, some things do take longer than others, but I would, I would say it's more because of the amount of people that want to use them.
So, supply and demand.
Yeah.
These pieces were all done with the 3D printer, and this was a mathematical formula with double, triple, quadrupling, and then these as well.
So, how long would it take to print something like, I don't know, like that egg chair?
I think the egg chair, the egg chair took around, for the one, for the one that's all the way on the left for you guys, the clear one, that one was a very short print because I didn't use a lot of material for it, but as I went further along with my project, I want it to be more precise and more of a full shape, so the ones that are further down, such as the final model in the gray one, took them a lot longer, I think somewhere around eight hours for that print.
So, you start that in the morning and go to class in the afternoon?
Yeah, yeah, so that would go overnight usually.
Okay, thank you.
Wyatt, you had talked about your aesthetic and how you don't have any hard edges. Is there a material in particular you think you ultimately would want to work with, wood, plastic, or whatever, as part of your aesthetic?
You know, I think, I think a lot about my aesthetic as the shapes that I'm building with. I don't, I don't, obviously, with doing final projects such as, I wanted to make a final project with the chairs that I did over there, it's tough to think about what material you're going to use because there are a lot of problems that come up with that, such as, especially with the chair, like, holding weight, retaining shape, and all of those other issues. So, it's something, it's something to think about, but I think my aesthetic was more focused on the actual shapes that I was using.
I have a question for Helen. I love the bike, and so I was curious if you're an avid bike rider and if this, you were motivated to do this, like, to build a better mousetrap idea, like, to just, is there something that you wanted to see in a bike that you, that was different, or, so what drove you to choose that?
So, I do ride bikes in the summer a lot, so I part that, but then also, the year before, in the class that I was in, we never made a bike, but there was a group of us who, like, the whole time, I don't know if we were, like, just joking around with Kazer or, like, if we were being serious, but we kept saying we wanted to make a bike, so we drew out a bunch of ideas, and we drew them on the computer, like, how they were talking about before with the pens and then...
Cintiq, sorry.
Yeah, exactly. So, we drew them out, and then the next year, so like, this year, in the beginning of the year, first semester, when we came back, I was thinking about what I wanted to do because we have, like, pretty much total freedom with what we can do, and I was like, well, why don't we try to make the bike? So, then, it's obviously, like, not the same as any bike because, like, probably the main difference is, like, the hinge is in the middle instead of the... main difference is, like, the hinge is in the middle, instead of the handlebars, like, moving, and then it's the front wheel that moves, it's the entire front that moves. So, it's definitely different. But, yeah, just that. It seemed like fun.
And Madison, a question for Madison, Isabella, whether, I know that you build them here, does anyone, do you use any models? Does anybody try on and walk around and wear your designs, or does it stay on the mannequin?
Mine definitely has to stay on the mannequin. I don't know about you.
I see Lady Gaga or somebody wearing that one over there.
At the moment, mine should also probably stay on the mannequin, I'm scared of ripping the shoulders and...
Is there any significance to which card you have facing up and which one you have facing down?
Yeah, so I tried to use for the front, so that it would be, like, more focused on these. I used the Queen, like, the Queens in the Hearts set, and then I tried to use either Hearts, other red cards, or other, like, Kings and Queens and Jacks. For the Kings and Jacks, all Hearts, and then other Queens, and then the Joker only in red.
Isabella has designed clothing for herself that she's worn.
Yeah.
I had a question for Isabella and Madison as well. How many hours of work goes into designing and developing something like either of these?
For me, the designing is a lot shorter than the actual building. The building takes quite a long time, probably a few weeks of class time.
Yeah, making mine definitely took the whole first semester, maybe more. And I came sometimes during my freeze to speed up the process and took some of it home, because just like the neck part, to glue the straws together, took me two classes.
Wow.
Thank you.
So, I was, I had two questions. I think the first one, some of you might have answered it, which is really where you find inspiration for your projects. And the other question is where you found your resources to then implement your ideas, because you have to go from thought, idea, and drawing to actually putting the object together. And, you know, there are a lot of steps in between, so I'm wondering what resources you used to gain the knowledge to actually build these items.
So, for my bike, well, we had the paddle bikes, then obviously we wanted to use wood, but then we used, like, a variety of stuff. So, the hinge is made out of a door hinge, actually. So, we got that material, and then obviously wheels, and in the wood, and then also just resources, like, you, you like, you find a lot of, like, inspiration and ideas from your classmates. So, there was one time, like, one day where I went into a couple of Kizers' other classes, and I just talked about my bikes, and then people could give me ideas. So, that was a place where I got inspiration from.
Yeah, kind of to second that, I mean, from each step of actually coming up with an idea, designing it and then building it, there's always, you know, peer review, and we're always giving, you know, giving advice to whoever's designing something. Like, normally when we, if we have an idea of something to design, we'll draw it out, and we'll make thumbnail sketches, and then we'll show it to different classmates, and then we'll go from there with the actual design. There's always some sort of peer review idea. How did I learn Fusion? So, when, using the 3D printer, there's a program called Fusion 360, and it's where you design the actual thing that you're going to print. I learned that from, I really kind of learned it mostly on my own, but there was, I forget his name, there were a couple people that, they graduated now, but that actually helped me learn it. But it's, it's a program that really you can get to learn on your own, if you just...
They also teach it in the Intro to Engineering classes, which is where I learned it.
Yeah, for me, similar to Luke, I found my outlet for creating all of my works, turning them from my drawings into actual 3D models to be from Fusion. I knew with a lot of my projects that I wanted them to be exact, you know, as fun as it would be to be able to build something like that out of hand. In order to create this mass amount of models and stuff like that, I found that Fusion was the best option for me, because, one, it's exact, two, it's very fast, and three, it looks good.
I find it intriguing, for something that's so individualistic, how much you've all collaborated.
How many people in the class spread it?
Twenty.
Twenty?
You know what I think is great, and I know we have another presentation that we need to do tonight, is what you don't realize is that we have presentations all year long, and we start with, like, the kindergarten and the first and the second graders talking about designing and innovating, and now you're culminating our process, and the way that you're talking about your work, and the way that you work with each other, and the way that you're explaining the design process is exactly what we want to hear from our upper-level students. So, I just want to thank Louise, Kate, and Chris for facilitating the work that you guys are doing, and for presenting all of this to us tonight, and affirming that our district's on the right pathway, in terms of STEAM education and helping support project-based learning in our schools. So, I mean, it was really fantastic. So creative, we really appreciate it. So, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
That was great.
So, so that was art, and thank you so much for coming, that was fantastic. We are going to do a little transition now to social studies, to show you some of the active student learning PBL work that's been going on there. So, as we transition out of here, Luke's actually staying, right? Part of both. And then we'll bring up some other students and social studies teachers for that. The more we're transitioning, I also want to acknowledge that Colleen O'Connor, Lynn Stewart, and Ron Gamble are here, assistant principals who support our departments. Thank you very much. Okay, great. So, now we're moving over to social studies, and I'd like to introduce Mary Devane, sorry, Mary Devane and Suzanne Mosca from, this is from our AP US History courses, and they're going to speak a little bit about the PBL work that's been going on for years, and now is in our 11th grade, and our students are going to, I think, perform for you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, folks, so, welcome. A year ago, we had social studies teachers here from Global 9 and Global 10, talking about the PBL work that we've been doing in social studies. We've been redesigning our curriculum, integrating project-based learning, and this year, we've moved it into the 11th grade, in AP US History in particular. So, what we want to do is give you a sort of a little snapshot of a project we did this year, called the Model Congress. So, when we were teaching the Gilded Age, which is a very important period in American history, but it's a little dry, okay? And one of the most important topics in the Gilded Age is what's called the Gold-Silver Debate over the US currency. That's incredibly dry. And so, okay, we discovered this Model Congress project, and it just so happened that the timing was the exact week that the brand-new K-110 opened. So, we got an inspiration, and we took the new K-110, and we turned it into the halls of Congress. And what we did was we actually combined our classes. So, Ms. Mosca and I, we combined our course four classes, so the kids were all working together. And we organized K-110 with the Democrats, the Populists, and the Socialists on the left, just like in Congress, and the Republicans, and we added in our big businessmen as well over on the right. And so, the students were sitting in their appropriate seats, and they were role-playing this Congress. It went on for a week, so every day we were debating different bills, different topics. So, it was a real extended project. So, to set the stage, President Cleveland, okay, is going to begin.
Hello, my name is President Grover Cleveland, a Bourbon Democrat, and the only Democratic president during the era of industrialization. The year is 1890, so I am actually a former president, as I have just lost my bid for reelection. So, Civil War set the stage for industrialization. The Homestead Act, people moving west, and the railroad and the telegraph systems were a major factor in the Union's victory. Coming out of the Civil War, Jefferson's vision of a rolling farm of yeoman farmers was dead. Hamilton's plan prevails, and America launches into industrialization. The Pacific Railway Act, passed right after the Civil War, starts constructing the transcontinental railroad. And speaking of railroads, as industrialization developed, completely unregulated by the government, some smart men took control of entire central industries. Some major trusts formed, including Vanderbilt's railroads, J.P. Morgan's banks, Carnegie Steel, and Rockefeller's Standard Oil. The wealth gap widened, and these leaders of industry hired cheap immigrant labor and forced them to toil in inhumane working conditions. But of course, most of human history is dedicated to us finding food, so industrialization can only happen once everyone is fed. To feed our bursting population, American industrialized farming. Big companies took over, and small farmers grew deeper and deeper into debt, which then leads us to this debate over the national currency. At this point in history, nations' national currency is backed by hard metal, and America's national currency has always been backed by gold. However, with the increase of silver mines out west, there has been a push to increase the money supply by adding silver to the gold standard. Thank you.
Good evening, I am the gentleman William Jennings Bryan, from the great state of Nebraska, a populist. The common man is struggling. He is in debt after being forced to borrow money for land purchases and crop financing that he could not previously afford, due to the oppressive nature of large corporations. He has no way to recover from the great panic that ensued under the Grant administration, and drought has devastated his crops. Unable to maintain a steady income, for his family, despite all of his hard work, he has dropped his prices for corn, meat, and eggs to less than 10 cents. The common man is lacking almost all support, but what is one thing that he does have? Silver. Western miners and farmers have a massive surplus of silver, but what use is it to the common man if he cannot turn a silver bullion in for paper notes? Since the crime of '73, only the wealthy business owner has been able to prosper in the American economy, as silver has been demonetized. The effort to return to bimetallism in the past with the Bland-Allison Act in 1878 was simply not enough. The only way to save the common man now is with the passage of the Silver Purchase Act. It will allow for a massive increase in the coinage of silver, thereby putting more money into circulation, providing for just enough natural inflation for our nation's farmers to make more money per crop sold, while the value of their debt will remain the same. Investors, miners, farmers, and all other debtors will finally be able to pay off their dues. For advocates of big business, if businessmen give millions upon millions of dollars towards charity and education, why shouldn't they help their fellow Americans, who number far greater than any other group in need? The resulting inflation from increased coinage of silver would only impact those with a surplus of wealth slightly, and the option of exchanging gold for paper notes would still be available. Let us stop putting the wealthy before the poor and the successful over the less fortunate. Vote to pass the Silver Purchase Act and save the hard-working, honest citizens of our nation. Thank you.
Very good speech, very good. Good evening, my name is J.P. Morgan, Republican businessman from the great city of New York, and I'm here to make a plea with Congress today. A plea to not politicize our currency and endanger the very stability of our nation and our currency, at the great expense of the many. What use is it for the common man when our currency becomes worthless or becomes degraded? Let me explain to you today why the Silver Purchase Act makes no sense and will ultimately be detrimental to the majority of Americans living today. Listening to the rhetoric by the Democrats on the other side, clearly, it clearly shows why they keep losing elections as well, just like to add that. In order for any nation to be successful, it makes sense that the currency should be stable. The shift from gold to silver would severely destabilize our currency. Contrary to what the other side actually wants you to believe, this worsens the economy for not just the wealthy, like myself, but for all Americans. Think about the honest factory worker working in Cleveland, Ohio, working long hours for their wages. With this act, the subsequent inflation would erode their earnings power significantly. Or perhaps, think about the elderly family, living on their savings and only their savings, savings which would be greatly diminished by the subsequent inflation resulting from this act. Why should we devalue our currency on the sole basis of appeasing farmers and other people, who, I should emphasize, willingly took on cocky amounts of debt? The majority of Americans depend on a stable currency, which is the bedrock of our financial system, and it has worked for pretty much all of American history. Vote to spill down for a stable currency and a stable tomorrow. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Elizabeth Lees, the gentleman from Kansas and a populist. So, currently, the gold standard is restricting our money supply because of the lack of money in circulation at the expense of the common man. Right now, the concentration of economic power is in the hands of these trusts and bankers, while the farmers and the rest of the population are being overlooked as others prosper. We need to stop the common man from being taken advantage of. We are in debt because of these big businesses who are exploiting the common people, so it's only fair to add silver to help the farmers. Adding silver to the money supply will benefit the commoners, because now we can borrow money at lower interest rates, pay off our loans more easily, and the prices of our crops will go up.
Hello, my name is John D. Rockefeller, a businessman from Ohio. What we are debating today is the future of the American economy. Do we want to artificially restrict the flow of the free market by defending common agrarian farmers, a system in conflict with the path of American industrialization? Or do we want to embrace the path of industrialization, providing more jobs and opportunity in an efficient form of agriculture that increases the availability of food to an unprecedented level? These small farmers went into debt trying to practice a system of farming that simply does not support Americans. We need to embrace this transition to industry and provide for our citizens. What we need to do is reject silver to protect not just big business, but to protect everyone else who would be harmed by this act, due to increased food prices and inflation of currency. Thank you.
Hi, I'm James Weaver, the gentleman from Ohio. Rockefeller, you claim that industrial farming is the future of American farming, that the common man farmer can't support the American economy. At this point, that's just a theory, because up until this point, the common man farmer has supported the American agriculture. And the tightened money supply benefits the creditors, like banks and big businessmen, such as Rockefeller, Carnegie, at the expense of debtors like these common man farmers. They have to borrow money from the banks and from the businessmen, just in order to plant the cash crops that should provide for themselves and the American economy. These help the economy thrive, but the so-called gold standard makes it nearly impossible for the farmers to pay off the debts from the loans. Bimetallism will alleviate this issue and allow more than just the top 1% of American society to live the American dream.
Hello, I'm William McKinley, the gentleman of Ohio. My one and only concern is protecting American business. While I don't support the clauses of the Silver Act, voting for it will in turn benefit American businesses and our economy. I am confident that the passage of this act will allow for the passage of a protective tariff. A protective tariff will allow for the protection of American business against our foreign competitors. It is more valuable for the American economy to introduce the protective tariff than it is to remove concern about our currency. While introducing a bimetal system may decrease the value of our money, a tariff will have such a positive impact on American business that it's worth making this compromise. By making this compromise, the passage of this heavy tariff, which I will pass as McKinley tariff on imported goods, may become a possibility and will in turn benefit American industry, negating the concern that free silver poses. The backbone of American industry, of the American economy, is basically the success of American business, not the form of money that it runs on.
Hello, I am Eugene Debs, the gentleman from Indiana. And my understanding of this situation is that extremely wealthy businessmen have exploited the farmers and poor people in America as a whole during this era. Even though they hoard massive amounts of wealth, they are unwilling to assist the poor farmers who have been abused by predatory money-lending schemes and forced into debt which they are unable to recover from. These farmers do, however, own a large amount of silver and will benefit immensely from the passage of this act. To pass this act is to help farmers, it is to help the poor... To pass this act is to help farmers, it is to help the poor, the backbone of America, who have built up this country from the ground. The wealthy business owners such as Rockefeller and J.P. Morgan have abused and exploited the poor in their factories and just in the society as a whole with their hoarding of immense amounts of wealth. This act will be a stepping stone towards wealth equality in America and truly saving the poor and farmers from a horrible fate and destitution. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Teddy Roosevelt, a Republican representative from New York. So I want to kind of open up my statement by acknowledging kind of the Democrats' argument. It's a very valid argument. I'm from New York, and anytime I'm in New York City, it couldn't be more conspicuous the wealth gap that exists at our time. Big businesses control our economy, and wealthy men hoard all the wealth, whereas the other ninety-nine percent are living in really awful conditions. With that being said, however, passing the Silver Act is the improper way to attack big business. I personally am a believer that large corporations shouldn't exist because they disadvantage the common people. However, you have to realize that the overall vision of the country, of Hamilton's vision, is really starting to manifest and play out, and that's the way of the future. And using such frivolous means of attacking big business is only going to hurt us as a foreign power, as well perhaps later say in ten years when I'm vice president. The idea of free silver is one way to ensure widespread industrial and social ruin. So therefore, we need to sort of prioritize good corporation and then the industrial illusion that we have, but still attack large corporations. However, this is not the way to do that. Thank you.
I hope you enjoyed this brief snapshot of this debate, and I really want to emphasize how this active learning made this topic more approachable to students, because it is, as Ms. Devine said, very dry, and it is complicated to understand all these different perspectives, because they seem so foreign to us. But this active learning forces students to become immersed in the culture of the time period and put yourself into other people's shoes and to learn why that perspective may have been right for that person during that time period. And this really forces students to learn instead of just be sitting there listening to the teacher and not totally processing the information, because you will eventually have to go up and speak about it as if you know, and then debate with your peers and learn from their ideas as well as your own. And I really want to emphasize this student collaboration. And in this debate, we each had partners that had the same person as us, and this allowed you to bounce ideas off of each other, because sometimes when reading the articles, because we were reading on primary sources, you miss certain things, and so that someone else will pick up. And this allows you to get a more holistic review of everything that is, all the materials that are thrown at you during these debates. And so project-based learning in social studies, I think, is really important, because it allows students to take risks in a very low-risk setting, because everyone will cheer each other on, no matter what happens. And it also allows us to get out of that day-to-day grind of just sitting there and taking notes. And during this, it was really nice to go to a different classroom, especially with all the new facilities, and stop staring at the smartboards all day and your laptops, and to be able to talk to people and learn from each other. And so I think we're all going to go around and say what we liked about the project-based learning. So Edward's going to start.
Thank you. Very nice words.
Can you introduce yourself as you go around?
Yeah, I'm Edward Zhang. I think Sophie really captured, in essence, why PBL is... Well, I'm just going to frankly say, right, a lot of people, and I don't just speak for myself when I say this, a lot of people just don't like sitting in a class for an hour reading from a textbook. It can get dry. Sometimes when it comes down to the issues, you do become, you forget what the importance of it is, and you forget about its real-life application. Just read it, you just memorize it. With PBL, with what we've been doing with Model Congress, we're forced to, as Sophie said, actually immerse ourselves into the topic and understand the topic and all of its technical details and nuances. Some ideas which are more abstract, right, even then, we still get a better understanding, because as Sophie said, we're debating it, right? We're getting challenged on our viewpoints, and we're challenging other people. And it's through those challenges where I think a complete understanding can be achieved.
Okay. This is Dylan Preston.
Hi. To add on to what Edward was saying, I feel a problem with just, you know, standard class-based learning is, it's often just about, you know, what acts get passed, what acts didn't. But by engaging in debate and engaging in like a class-based discussion, students are able to understand more not just like the results of history, what occurred, but rather understand why it occurred, what were the opinions of the time, and why were these opinions valid, and how did they clash with each other to overall result in the history that we learn now. And with PBL, you're able to, especially in like such a large environment like the auditorium that we use, you're able to engage in this kind of model Congress and hear the different opinions of figures of the past to better understand exactly why certain acts got passed and why, how our current culture is influenced by the political climate of the past. Specifically now, we're living in the political tensions that exist now, and we hear the current debates, but what's often missed without this kind of open discussion class is the debates of the past, which I think are very well shown through this medium.
Okay. Next speaker is Nora Goodman.
Hi. I think that the most valuable part, especially for this project with the PBL, is the fact that, like with something like this, we're learning about so many different historical figures and then so many different political parties. But with this, not only do we have like a name-to-a-face recognition, so like now, like when I'm studying for the AP, I sort of even like think of some of my friends who played these roles. I also think just like experiencing, especially in K-110, like what it felt like to be a part of a Congress is really valuable and gave us like a greater experience, not just of like learning specifically, but like what our government system is based on today and how that even works. So I feel like that was really valuable for all of us.
Okay, this is Matt.
Hi. So by nature, there's going to be a lot of high school students that kind of BS their way through the work when they can. But with projects like these, everyone has their own role that they have to play, and obviously you guys just saw Snapshot. But we have forty-something people in a room, and everyone has a unique perspective on the issue, and that's kind of what gets us the whole story. And by that design, everyone's kind of held accountable to do their work, because otherwise everyone else is going to have that gap in knowledge for whatever role they were supposed to play. So by design, a lot of these projects that we do make sure that the work gets done and gets done thoroughly.
This is Brendan.
Hi. And one of the things about the PBL thing in general that we've done throughout this year is that it's really forced you to acknowledge the multiple perspectives on history, even ones that you might regard, looking on from in the past, as completely incorrect and ridiculous. Like the free silver thing that was going on, that would not have, that shouldn't have happened. If that had happened, it would have been terrible. Except there are still people who would wholeheartedly support that, and it forces you to get behind a truly unique perspective on history.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, this is Haley.
Hi. Doing projects like this really allows you to go like beyond just like the simple details and really understand truly what went like on in history, because you're learning all the different sides and like the advantages and disadvantages to each point. And so doing this is really valuable, because you're truly like emulating history and this way.
Okay. As introduced before, this is Luke.
Hello. So what I really enjoyed about this Model Congress in particular was, it wasn't, the actual Congress wasn't really scripted, like you had a knowledge of the different issues we're talking about from reading through primary sources before, but when you got up there, you're really responding to another person, and it requires a much more deep understanding and requires more critical thinking on the spot, which was really, I thought, enjoyable.
Okay, this is Ellie.
Hi. Yeah, so what I love about PBL kind of relates to what Luke said, that you really, it's risk-taking. You're going to stand up in front of this whole auditorium full of people, and you have to know what you're talking about, and you have to have a thorough understanding of the topic. You can't just get the perspective of your one person, write your little speech, then read your little speech, and then you sit back down. You have to be able to answer questions, you have to be able to negotiate, you have to thoroughly understand your perspective and the perspective of others, and it's sort of almost that tension and it kind of, you know what, like I kind of sympathize with Grover Cleveland now. Like, he made some good decisions, he made some not-so-good decisions, but I understand my part, and I understand the parts of others where they were coming from, what groups they were wanted to represent. And I think it also really shows you the heart of history, that even if we look back and some of those decisions weren't so great, that a lot of politicians, they were really trying to help people, and they were trying to help certain groups. And that kind of sometimes gets missed when you're just taking notes on the years and the names. So I think that's what's great about PBL.
And finally, we have Zain.
Hi. So I think with history in general, I think one of the things that happens a lot is you sort of get one side of the story, and you don't really understand the perspectives. A lot of times with an argument like this, where you have two sides that are really passionate about the issue, you don't really, a textbook doesn't really give you what's going on from the perspective of each side. So I think what PBL did is, especially for this project, really creates like an understanding on both perspectives at the time, which I thought was great for, you know, being able to input into our course. But what was even cooler about it was, as we were doing the project and really gaining an understanding of perspectives, you can sort of see how the continuity of those perspectives, how they've existed like all throughout American history and how they continue to exist. One of the examples of that was, there was a tariff that we debated, one of the other issues, and proposing that tariff was an income tax. And that was the first time that we ever really saw progressive income tax be proposed. And this was also at the same time that you, in Congress, the debate of like, this new debate that came up about adding the progressive income tax back in. So I thought it was really interesting to see how like that argument originated and the perspectives there, and the sort of development that kind of occurred in today's society, and how those perspectives still exist, and how we still have similar discourse going on. So I think PBL like really gives you a good understanding of perspectives and the continuity of them.
Thank you. Okay. So did you guys...
I just want to thank these superstars. They've been like, and they're like, they're studying for their AP exam on Friday.
It's on Friday, we know. Thank you.
So, quick question. How long did you work on this project and this sole perspective?
Anyone?
Anyone? Was it a week? Was it one?
It was a week-long project, yeah.
Plus the prep was like another two weeks.
Yeah, so it was like over a week. So it was, you know, it was a real multi-day, reembedded. So we didn't teach, 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 and then do the project. The project was the learning.
And what comes next? Did you follow on with the Federal Reserve, or where's this going, Mr. Devine?
In terms of this particular project?
Well, yeah, does this lead to another...
Yeah, so what was interesting was, a lot of the historical figures in the Gilded Age Congress, the next historical period is the Progressive Era. So like, you know, Debs kept being Debs, and Roosevelt kept being Roosevelt. So as we continued on with other topics and debates, lots of the kids were stayed in those roles as we would continue to debate. So we went back to our regular classroom, but we continued in those roles and continued a number of the different themes.
So this continued through units through the year?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did they have a choice of roles, or did they get, were they assigned?
We were assigned.
And did you find that the more things, it doesn't seem similar to what's happening today? Were there a lot of parallels to...
I think, yeah, since like going back to what I was saying about that tariff, just seeing sort of, like I think one of the coolest things, especially Ms. Mosca's really emphasized throughout our course, is like, and the AP kind of structures it too that way, is the continuity that it exists. So I feel like there's always two sides of the argument, you're not really always getting that throughout the course. So for me, it's just cool to see how the perspectives that existed then, like even on the argument like taxes, or like the interest between like big business and the common people, how that argument still exists today and how the perspectives are still very similar, like how the issue hasn't...
I think one other thing, and I think Nora brought this up before, was the Model Congress project in particular really showed us what a Congress looked like. I mean, as much as we talk about government and what acts were passed, there had never really been like a deep dive into what exactly a day as a public servant might look like. And I think it was really interesting to see the caucus structure and how people debate these things. And, I mean, the structure is pretty continuous until today, and I think it serves all to make us better citizens when we graduate and become a voting age, that we now know how our government works, and we have personal experience in knowing how our government works.
So I just want to share with you that back in 2011, when I was first on the board, which would include someone in the audience as well, Karen Visser, sitting right there, she was on the board with me, we first came on together. The board and the, you know, the district administration at the time, we all talked about how the traditional classroom does not reflect the reality of life and the world that you're going to live in and become a citizen in and work in. And we really brainstormed how we could make classroom learning more relevant and engaging. And as you know, you know, classes are taught in silos, subjects are taught individually in silos in a way that you're not going to encounter in the real world. You're not going to encounter math, or science, or social studies separately. So the idea was to make school more realistic and more engaging. And so that was the idea behind the active learning spaces and the project-based learning that you're doing. And we started with the iLab, that's right out there as an experiment, and then we continued on with the $42.5 million bond to create the active learning spaces that you see are being built around you. And I have to say, there was a lot of resistance to this. And what you're doing now is you're coming back to the community to say, this is really working. This is exactly what we expected to happen. We expected that dry subjects would come to life, and that you wouldn't be sitting in a classroom just passively listening and taking tests. Because, you know, one of the ideas is that you become really good at what you do. So if what you're doing is sitting in a classroom and taking tests, that's what you'll be good at, and you'll go out into the world and have to figure things out all over again. So I'm so happy to hear not only your presentation, but your take on what it means to you to learn in this way. And I hope you do more of it and that you come back and share your experiences with us again. Thank you.
I just want to say that, just to hear you all speak, to me is proof that this has been very effectual, because you all are extremely comfortable coming up. You're very articulate and very passionate about what you're doing. So I thank you for bringing this section of AP US to life for all of us. It was really a joy. Thank you so much.
So last thing is, good luck on your GEMS.
So I just want to thank Susan and Mary, or your teachers, for helping facilitate this project. And again, we want to thank all of you for sharing your learning with us here tonight, and Mr. Castilla and the high school administration for coming. And I know that our high school students get up the earliest, so...
APs tomorrow.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna head out, well, excuse you, but thank you so much for everything.
Thank you very much.
Andrew, you're going to stay up here, right?
Up here?
Yeah.
So I wanted to talk about high school graduation for the class of 2020. So we had had a previous meeting where I had shared with you that, based on a correspondence that Warren had received from a student, that the high school was taking a look at proposing an alternative for graduation for the following year to move it off of Father's Day. So Andrew has done some work with his team, so he wanted to talk to you a little bit about what they were thinking to get your insight. And then we're looking for your conceptual, the board doesn't necessarily approve the graduation date, but we need your conceptual approval to build the calendar, so that's the purpose of this conversation tonight. So go ahead, Andrew.
Sure. So Assistant Principal Lynn Stewart, who is working with the current junior class, all of these students up here today were actually members of the junior class, we're looking toward next year and towards graduation, and for a number of reasons, including, you know, mainly the holiday for Father's Day is typically when the graduation falls and sort of conflates the two, the graduation and Father's Day. Lots of fathers out there who, and families that want to celebrate Father's Day together. We have a lot of employees here who work for very long hours on Father's Day, and they thought it'd be a wonderful gesture if we were to move graduation a day earlier onto the Saturday and keep Father's Day separate for celebrations with... the Saturday, and keep Father's Day separate for celebrations with families for the holiday. I think that's the main, Lynn could chime in now if there's additional pieces to that.
Come on up.
Come on up.
So the other main argument that the students met with me before they wrote the letter to the board was that they really felt that travel was something to take into consideration as well. A lot of families come in from out of town, and when they come in and have to turn around and leave right away on Sunday, it's a lot to ask of family members. So they felt that those people who really want to tie Father's Day in with graduation could do so by having family members come in from out of town to celebrate their graduation, and then stay for the weekend and be able to celebrate Father's Day as well. But it would be respectful of family that are traveling from a distance in order to leave. And they also, as Andrew said, were very thoughtful of wanting to have a lot of faculty members come from way back from kindergarten through the years. And they felt that having faculty choose between their families and coming to graduation wasn't necessarily what they wanted to do. So they were saying that if they had graduation day earlier, that they also may be able to get more teachers and faculty coming. There was also a request based on the date. And I don't know if you want to talk about the date, and then I can talk about the request, or should I go right into that? Okay, so this year, the day before Father's Day is June 20th. And being that there's also the class of 2020, they thought it would be really cool to also say that they graduated on the 20th. So just.
So 2020, 20.
2020, 20. So when they first came in as freshmen, they had a little slogan, but it kind of fell by the wayside, but we have 2020 vision. So I think they're taking it to another step by thinking about the 20th as well falling on this Saturday.
Yeah, I don't know if you said this, I just wanted to congratulate the teachers, but did you talk about how Father's Day is not easy for everybody?
No, and we have several students who unfortunately have lost fathers along the way, and where, for many of us, it's a really happy time. Having that coincide with Father's Day could also be hard for some of our students. And our student government, our leadership council, were very thoughtful of some of the classmates that may be facing that as a difficult day, and not necessarily drawing light to that they're there celebrating a monumental occasion without their fathers. And the maintenance workers.
So do you, do you want to talk a little bit about when you're thinking, the time?
I think the time is a bit flexible. We were thinking maybe even moving that to earlier in the day, maybe to 10 o'clock. My own preference around that is. Yeah. Or late morning, I mean, rather than evening. Sort of awake and energized, but also I think of, I think of those hot weather, the hot weather thunderstorms that roll in in the afternoon, and having presided over a graduation that was threatened by thunderstorms. And that was a challenging thing to make a call on, when you have, you know, thousands of people in there, and an evacuation plan to get people under, and with ambulatory issues in a wet field, and if we had to evacuate that tent. And we can't guarantee no thunderstorms in the morning, but.
I also think by moving it a day earlier, you give yourself a day, flex day in case.
I love that idea as well. Love that idea, have a rain date, in case it looks really, looks in dangerous thunderstorms under a huge tent with large metal poles. So that would be fantastic, have that option as well. But the timing is more of a suggestion. The students really were, their proposal was really for a change of the date for those reasons. And the timing is a suggestion by.
My concern about the time being that early, was exactly the concern that the students had about, somebody mentioned about all the employees who have to work on Sunday. If we're gonna run this thing at 10:00 a.m., probably they're gonna be here. I spoke to Joe Romondo, and the staff, the custodial staff gets here 10 hours prior to graduation. So if we start at 10:00 a.m., we're talking midnight. It's hard, probably harder to work at night without the sun.
Well, I think we have to find out from maintenance workers how, what their lead time would be in terms of.
That's their lead time, it's 10 hours.
Right, I mean, what they could do the day before, if it's morning versus afternoon, or how that gets done, so.
John, does that sound right, does this sound right to you? No.
Joe told me they get here about 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock in the morning for graduation to start preparing.
Yeah, they can move faster.
I also think though that, that they, because of the time of it, that they probably do all of their.
Do all the dirt, that's what I was gonna say, can they do some the day before?
They could do some the day before on the Friday.
I think they do it because they don't want anything touched. Was the only, I get, I sort of get the concept of 2020, 20. But did you consider any other days, like a Thursday evening, or Monday evening?
So I did, I threw out a whole bunch of, I know that this is, not the only time it's been moved, but it's definitely for some time. And they really felt that they still wanted on a weekend to be able to have family come in. I suggested them to really brainstorm if there was additional days. And there are, you know, other school districts that will do them on a Thursday, but the students, I don't have a preference, but the students really felt that they wanted it on that Saturday.
So I would share this. If it's at 10, if it's at 12, if it's at 9:00 a.m., if it's at 8:00 p.m., we will have it ready. So I don't want our custodians to be driving this decision. They will.
I'm not saying they drive it, I just told, I was told it takes a while.
I know, I just, I just want to share that, I don't want you to make the decision based on our staff, because we will have it ready. There are school districts across the country that have it at all different hours.
I was gonna say, especially like.
So we should make the decision based on what we feel is best for the community. So whether it's 10, or 6, or another time in between, I mean, what are your thoughts about that?
My thoughts are, she saved by the time.
Well, let's talk about, let's just talk about, let's talk about the date first.
So first of all, the, you know, we see the students here, they're learning in classrooms, so I'd like to thank you, Laura, Lynn, because they're working with you. The letter I received from that student, I can't remember what.
Lulu.
Was magnificently written, it was perfect. And she stated the case and the reasons, and I think they learned from you also. So thank you for also being a teacher mentor for our students and as the AP. I think, I like the idea of moving it a day, I'm concerned about the time. I think, you know, traditions in high schools change hard. This, I don't know if this is really a tradition or not, it's been in place for a while. You know, my cousin graduated from Greeley in 1968, and they had, I think, a Friday night or Saturday night. I remember being a young kid in a high school, thinking, I never want to graduate because this is really torturous. And then they went outside the tent. So I think the idea of moving it is great. I think it satisfies a lot of issues that we might have had. And I think they, the other thing I'd like to say is, we've had other groups come to us and say, can we change high school graduation? But they come in February of the year they're gonna graduate. We don't have enough time to plan. This gives us plenty of time to plan and really work this thing through. So I am all for moving the date.
I also am very much in favor, I think, over the years, and being a longtime resident here, it's something that's been brought up numerous times over the years, but not a concerted effort that was taken in advance and with a student-teacher, you know, joint support. And the letter was wonderful, and really hit on all the things that I think a lot of community members had talked about for years, which is being considerate of, being a family-friendly event, you know, doing it in the middle of the week or on a Monday. It's not family-friendly, if you want, if you want out-of-town families to be with you. It's also considerate of our faculty, of our maintenance workers. And I think it's, Saturday's a better day. It allows people to enjoy the weekend, it stays off Father's Day for a number of reasons. So I'm a big supporter of it. I think it's a really excellent idea, and it benefits the community as a whole. In terms of the time, I'd be flexible to see what really works well for our staff and the maintenance workers, and what seems feasible given weather concerns and things like that. But I think the date is fantastic.
Thank you.
I don't really have anything to add. It's all been well thought out, it's their graduation, I am open to whatever works logistically.
I have no objections to the administration making this decision. I think it's, I'm indifferent, I think it's a fine decision. You guys go for it.
Well, moving graduation from Father's Day, something that I've thought was a good idea for a very long time. Ironically, it was the administration, although, in all fairness, not this administration, told us that we couldn't. So it's very ironic to hear you give us back all the reasons that some of us had given, you know, some years ago. And, you know, having it on Father's Day is not supportive of families at all. You know, it really breaks up families. And so I'm glad we've come to the point now where we want to change it. Everyone wants to change it. So I'm very relieved about this, and so, you know, as for the timing.
Laura, I think you have a yes.
You have a yes on the, on moving it.
I'm happy to be able to share that with the students.
And I'm happy, I'm happy that we're moving it.
Thank you.
All right, finally.
So can you please, please share that with Lulu?
Yes, I would love to share with the whole.
Do we need to settle on the time?
They're actually meeting tomorrow, so that'll be great for me to share.
Okay, so can we just, just so I can get my head around this. So we're gonna move graduation to the Saturday. And so Lynn and Andrew will make that known to our junior parents, because that's a shift, so we need to, we need to make them know that as soon as we can. But we will not settle on the date, and I will, I mean, the time. I will come back to you after we meet internally and talk about what are our options. So we don't have to make that decision tonight. I think the most important decision.
Is the date.
That we need to make is the date, so.
Okay, so I'll share that with the students tomorrow, they meet tomorrow, the leadership council, and then we'll get the notification out to all families.
Yes, but I'd like us to send the notification out.
First.
Yes, I want that to come from the district.
Sure.
Right? So parents hear from us, and they don't hear from social media, so we need to get that out tomorrow.
Did the students indicate a time they prefer?
No. Nope, they just were really focusing on the date.
Yeah.
I don't think the students would be happy about early morning, just to guess.
But in college, they graduate early in the morning. You make it, they'll show up. They'll be shocked to know.
I think what we'll do, as we really value their feedback in this process, is that we'll talk as administration, but we'll also get some feedback from the students. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks for that, thanks, Andrew.
You know, before we cut off the subject, I just want to say that in terms of travel time, that having it on Saturday morning might not be helpful for people traveling in as well.
Yes.
That people might not be able to come on a Friday, so if they show up on Saturday, I think that Saturday morning would be very difficult.
That's what we're just, that's what I was thinking about.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll go back to you, apparently the 29th. So thank you for your flexibility. Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you.
So this is what I think we should do next, we should do the budget hearing. John's actually gonna run through the slides, because we've done this.
One more time, John.
Multiple times, so we're gonna do our budget hearing part first. And then we're gonna go into the library presentation.
Just to check, the budget hearing, is that only for the school budget, or is that for the library budget as well?
We're gonna do the library budget next.
It's only for our budget.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
So I'd like to introduce the gentleman from Chapel Quad, John Chaff. And he will, with great efficiency, go through our budget presentation. And I'd like to remind the community that we've done this numerous times. So this is the final opportunity for anyone to make a comment on the budget before we vote on it in a few weeks. So John, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Christine, and efficiency is the word. So now we're at the budget hearing, and I'll show you the process. And since we have gone through those, most of the slides, in fact, all the slides numerous times, so I'm gonna skip some, and I'm going to just show the highlights. And I just want to mention, all the budget information is on the website. And also, a budget newsletter like this is going out today. So you should be getting the budget newsletter in the mail probably by the end of this week. And so, so we talked about the two board questions. One is related to the budget, and the other one is related to curriculum, learning. And this is our strategic planning. And we talked about the priorities, and, you know, the highlights, and the four pillars, the foundations to build a budget, so these are the four items. And then operating standards. And the importance here is that, you know, we want to continue to improve, we want to ensure safety, and we want to ensure excellence. So go through the budget calendar, so this is the process. We began publicly to talk about the budget, started in January. And in March, the superintendent presented her budget, and then we went through the process, and we went through all the components. And at the last board meeting, the board adopted the budget. So now we're at the next step, we have the hearing, and also the library is going to present its budget, which was adopted by their board, I think, in March. And so this is the proposed budget, and the budget-to-budget increase is 2.93. And we also have two propositions. One is related to the Bell cafeteria renovation, and the other one is K8 security vestibules that we plan to build. And here we showed the increase, and the increase is 2.93, even though it's very high. And we have a reason behind it, it's because we, this is a time that we had to start paying our new debt for the $42.5 million bond. And this is the expenditures in 10 components, and then the revenues. And the important number here is the budget-to-budget, the tax levy increase is just $1 million, and that represents 0.94%. These two numbers are important, because the 0.94 is actually showing how much the taxpayers, the tax burden increases 0.94%. And the importance of the $1 million increase in the tax levy is, that is, you know, running the, that's gonna be judged against the tax cap, which is over $3 million. So our tax levy increase is 0.94, but our tax cap is at 3.19%. So we are way below the tax cap. And I think Warren and I, we were just talking about this piece, is that when we talked about comparing to other school districts, I think we calculated about 60% of the school district, they go directly to the tax cap. And then when you look.
They go to the top, and some go just below the top.
Right. So that's about 60% of the school districts. And when we look at the other neighboring districts, we actually have the number four lowest tax levy increase. So these are the two, two propositions that are on the ballots. And David did a great job. When you look at the newsletter, we actually have very detailed information showing the language, what is on the ballot, and then also Q and A, and then also the drawings of the Bell cafeteria renovation, and also the security, safety proposition. And here just show the eight most recent budget. And then we have to show the tax analysis, and these are all estimated number for, for the town of Newcastle, the increase is 0.66%. And for, for the town of Mount Pleasant is 1.63, and these are all estimated numbers. And this shows the contingency budget process. If the budget fails the first time, the steps one has to take, and there's an opportunity to go for the second vote. And the contingency budget, previously I mentioned that the tax levy increase is $1 million, so we had to decrease either the budget, or to find additional funds which can come from the fund balance, or reduce the budget. And here's the legal notice, we have the budget notice, and the tax report cards. And here again, that show the budget-to-budget increase is 2.93. And here we have the budget highlights, and these, the information is all in the budget newsletter, so you will see it in the budget newsletter when you get the newsletter this weekend. And then the voter's information, I think you can still register vote with the district clerk up until five days prior to the vote. And the voting information is, you have until May 16 to register with the district clerk, and that's it.
John, thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
The administration was doing a great job putting this together.
That was fast.
It's a, I know, a team effort. You're probably starting your next, next year's budget already. And, um, as you said, we work, we, we understand what we need and we build our budget up from zero. We don't start from the top down.
Right.
Because we're always trying to save our taxpayers' funds while having an excellent education for the kids. Anyone else?
And also, I want to mention that, you know, the administration, we really appreciate the, the board, board of education support in, during this process. And also, we definitely appreciate, uh, the, the community support, coming to, to the budget meetings and ask questions and supporting them.
Any questions?
I, I just want to thank John and, and the whole team again for, you know, going through a very thorough painstaking and, um, process and doing all that hard work. And for anyone who was just tuning in today, I just want to say that we really did go through this budget category by category.
It's usually not this fast.
In great, great detail. So this was just a very quick recap of, of what we've been doing for weeks and weeks. Um, so, so thanks, uh, once again.
I'd like to ask, um, we'll move comment period just for the budget hearing. If anyone has any comments they'd like to make, you can make them now. Please hold your comments for three minutes.
I'm not, I'm just moving the microphone.
If not, we will continue with the agenda. So next up is the library board presentations. We have.
Oh, my God.
Pam, you can sit down.
I've never been at the table.
Yeah.
Wow, wow.
I've never been up here.
Well, no.
Well, I'm glad you're here.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here, everybody. Okay, now I'm going to run this thing, right? Oh. All right. Hi, everybody. Um, okay, our budget this year, we're proposing a tax increase, well, a total budget of 3.3 million, 176,254, of which there's a, a tax increase of $58,112 for $3,143,151. So you can see we have the breakdown here of staff and benefits, which is the highest percentage, which is 2,469,935. And our operating expenses are 520, 32,338, which is basically almost just a little increase, 4.1%. But again, the total is .74% or 3176254, which is way below the tax cap. We could have, uh, the maximum cap was $75,296 we could have had, but we're only, we only need $58,112. So that's what we're requesting this year, this part, for our tax increase. The analysis, it's a 1.60% increase for the town of Newcastle or a nickel per, uh, thousand. And for Pleasant, Mount Pleasant, it's 2.58% or 1.06, a dollar and six cents. We also have, um, one, um, position vacant for our board, which is right now uncontested. There's one person running. It's a five-year term. And so that's what's going to be on the ballot. Any questions?
That was quicker than John Chow.
He has more, more divisions than me.
I like you more.
And a lower increase percentage.
To like the nickel per thousand. Thank you for that.
Oh, you're welcome.
A tidbit. I appreciate that.
Yeah. If there's any questions?
I'm just, I'm just curious about, I noticed you're not using anything from fund balance this year. How, do you usually do that? I don't recall what the library usually does with fund balance.
It, you know, it depends on the expenses. Normally, we, we had, way back about 10 years ago, we did a little bit of fund balance. But if we don't need it and, and we have enough to cover, we, with the, um, increase, we could do it. This year, we didn't need it because our, we only used 58,000 and we, last year, we did 35,000 in fund balance.
Right.
And the fund balance, we don't have that much really. We have a couple hundred thousand. It's going to go towards furniture for the children's room and a few other things.
Right, so you can rebuild it.
Right. Right. So we'll rebuild it as years go on and then we'll see what happens next year to offset the, uh, the tax cap, because we know the tax cap is probably going to be permanent from now on. So we're going to be cautious as to how much we spend, et cetera. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody who's driven by, um, can see a lot in the construction, that's why I'm just, um, is, is any of that, has that changed the way you run the library ultimately and the expenditures, any of it?
Well, expenditures a little bit because the cleaning is going to be more. We have a custodian who's going to be, you know, doing more cleaning. And also, um, now that we have, uh, the parking lot in the back, the expansion, plowing for snow is just a little bit more. So we, I have to look at all the expenditures, electricity, fuel, with the bigger footprint of the building. But it's, we're going to see what happens because next year, we'll, we'll have a whole year when the construction's done, so we'll be able to judge what's going to happen next year.
I mean, my view, I'm an old person, so I view like a library with a card catalog. I mean, with all this new construction and the way libraries have gone, and you're going to eventually get rid of the books.
No. No, 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 no. No, because you know what? Children still need the tactile experience of reading a book and parents love to read to, to their children. And it's just not the same as reading it from a tablet or a computer. You want that one-on-one cuddle with your child or your caregiver cuddle or your grandparent cuddle. Children's books will always be there. Teen books, they like to read for pleasure, not having an assignment. And adults, adults always want to read. There are people who, when they retire, say, I want to read every book I didn't have time to read. So they're there for the books, yeah. There, I mean, it's definitely, you know, eBooks are one thing and there's a little decrease, but books will never be gone, totally.
I hope, I hope.
No, no. Anything else? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Back to Pam.
Are there any public comments regarding just the library presentation? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to transition to our geo, geothermal presentation.
Hey, thank you to Board Member, Marianne Diamondstein.
Yes. Thank you, Pam. And thank you.
Thank you for coming to support your director.
Well, it's quite my responsibility and the board does, um, we approve the budget and support.
They'll use this. Yeah.
Thank you, Marianne.
So as we transition, I just want to, um, I have a few more comments about my superintendent's report, so we try to do, keep things moving here. So I just want to thank David for preparing the newsletter that we'll be sending out tomorrow and the administrative team for all their work on that. Um, I want to acknowledge, uh, our music teachers. We're in concert season and I've been to quite a number of them and they're, they're just amazing. So it's great to see our kids embrace the arts as they do in our district. Um, at our next board meeting, we'll be discussing our heat alleviation plan. We've been working on that for a half a semester. So John and Joe will be presenting, um, our plan for your consideration. And the phonics committee has been meeting all year because we're looking at transitioning to a new phonics program. So I believe we'll have a recommendation for you at our next meeting and they'll be, representatives from there will be coming and presenting to you. Um, I've had an opportunity to run some focus groups, uh, in really regarding social emotional learning, so I probably will now transition and do a few focus groups with parents. Um, that will be randomly selected through our computer program, so I just wanted to let you know about that. And I also just want to thank the PTA for having Andrew Solomon come and visit. I know Vicki was able to tell, uh, attend and our administration was, uh, able to go see him speak and, um, we had many staff members there, there were a lot of parents and I just, it was really an, and, and really an impactful experience for us. So I just wanted to follow up and thank them for that. So thank you, Lori and Jessica. So that, John, let's introduce our next speakers.
So let me just lay the groundwork. I think this is actually a very long.
Quarter time, is it?
Yes. So this is actually a very long process because there was a, uh, application process and there was a review process. And these two gentlemen first met with, uh, Joe Gomada and myself to go over, uh, their first review, our first report. And then also, they came and made, made a presentation to the facilities committee. So this is the time that, uh, our facilities committee already, uh, is in agreement and want to go forward with this, so now they're going to make a presentation to the entire board. So let me introduce the two presenters. One is Jesse Scott and the other one is Guy Slicker. You want me to talk about your title? Jesse Scott is the business development manager, that's this gentleman to, to my right. And then Guy Slicker is the energy services product development director. I got it right. Okay, go ahead.
All right, great. Uh, good evening, everybody. Thank you for, for having us here. As John mentioned, my name is Jesse Scott. Uh, this is Guy Slicker. We work in the customer energy solutions group of the New York Power Authority. I'm going to give the, the background and overview of the company, the group and what we do. And Guy will talk about the specifics of the, the project that we're here to talk about today. So. Sorry. So, um, the, the Power Authority is the largest state-owned public utility in the country. Uh, our core business is generating and transmitting low-cost, clean energy for the economic benefit of the state of New York. We have 16 large power generation stations, mostly hydro and over 1,400 miles of transmission lines. Uh, but that's not all we do. Uh, besides, uh, sell low-cost hydro power, we also implement energy efficiency projects and energy efficiency programs on behalf of, uh, the public entities of, uh, the state of New York. We're only allowed to work statutorily with public entities. Our group is a state authority, so we act for, act as a non-for-profit. We implement programs for state government, local government and school districts all across the state. Um, programs that we implement include, uh, K-Solar, which is solar for schools, this geothermal challenge project that we're here to talk about tonight and several others. Uh, projects that we do do with school districts always have an educational component to it. So we want to use this as a teaching moment for the students of the district and that's what we'd like to do with this project as well. Uh, so what NIPA does, our energy services business, um, we are headquartered right in White Plains, so we're, we're located right here in the community. Uh, we do projects all over the, uh, the local community. Um, most recently in the county, we've done campus-wide LED lighting project at SUNY Purchase. We did all this LED streetlights in the city of White Plains and in Mount Vernon. And every year, our group of 200-plus project managers and engineers does between 200 to $300 million in just energy efficiency work, like the project we're talking about here today. Uh, and we do it from the very beginning of the process, site identification, designing the project through the construction management, identifying vendors, procuring the materials on your behalf, um, getting any incentives or grants that are out there available for the, for the project. Um, and then financing the project is, and as a power supply customer of ours, the district is able to finance this project on bill with us. Uh, so the idea is that it has a neutral impact on the cash flow of the project. So the project will pay for itself out of, uh, the energy savings. Next slide, John? Uh, so this is just a, um, an example of some of the, the types of measures that we implement. Uh, this particular project will be replacing a, uh, an oil, uh, used fuel source, um, HVAC system. Uh, but this project really at its core does, uh, complement a lot of the state and, um, national, but more states, so right now, uh, energy efficiency goals of reducing our dependency on our carbon-based fuels. So now I'll turn it over to Guy to talk about the specifics of the project.
Thank you. Uh, and in keeping with the students' PBL initiative, maybe I can be Thomas Edison as I speak to you. This program, as, as John mentioned, came out of the, of what we're calling the geothermal clean energy challenge. That is basically based on the fact that New York State has a goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 40% by 2030 and actually 80% by 2050. Heating accounts, currently accounts for about a third, heating of buildings currently accounts for about a third of all greenhouse gas emissions in New York State. So it's a very large sector and a very, um, good opportunity to go after reductions in that area. Geothermal or ground source heat pumps can significantly reduce greenhouse gas emissions because they can be a lot more efficient than conventional heating including systems. Um, the, the, the ground source heat pump challenge was introduced just last year to really identify, uh, prime applications for adoption of this technology and to be able to test and validate the new technologies that are really working now in many parts of the, in many parts of the state and the country. Next slide. Uh, how does a ground source heat pump work? Uh, a heat pump uses electricity to create cooling in the summer similar to an air conditioner. Unlike an air conditioner, it actually, it can actually work in reverse to create heat in the winter. A ground source heat pump uses a consistent 55-degree temperature of the ground to enable heat, heat pump to work at very high efficiency. It's not taking, uh, cold air in the winter and trying to heat that all the way up to room temperature. It's using the constant temperature of the ground to do that. Same in the summer. To get that resource, a series of wells are drilled to run a thermal distribution between the ground and the heat pumps. No fuel oil or natural gas is used in the system. Excellent. And for, for the Chappaqua Seven Bridges School project, we identified a number of, um, of, of, uh, design, um, parameters for the project and the savings and the calculations that, and the, and the economics that the project, um, resulted in. Basically, the idea would be to replace the existing oil-based heating system with a ground source heat pump to provide heating and cooling for the facility. The total estimated project cost is approximately 1, 1.6 million dollars, not including a potential reduction due to state aid. The next step of this project is to perform a site audit and geothermal test well to verify project costs and estimated annual savings of about 43,000 barrels, uh, 43,000 gallons of oil, 102,000 in annual utility and maintenance cost savings and about 377 metric tons of carbon, of CO2 equivalent greenhouse gas emissions. Next slide. I guess that's it.
That's it. So. So what we're, um, asking you to consider either tonight or we can move it to the next meeting, is, uh, the opportunity for us to have, uh, a site analysis to determine if the Seven Bridges is feasible to do this work. And that's item, uh, 5.14 on the agenda.
I would just like to add a point is that we didn't single out Seven Bridges Middle School alone. And when the application came up, uh, we looked at, uh, the, the minimum requirements and, uh, I think there's a size, size factor and our three elementary schools automatically, they were eliminated because they were too small. And also the, the, um, the energy source was an issue too, right? So, so we did look at, uh, we did put in the application for the high school and Bell and Seven Bridges and only Seven Bridges qualify. Um, so, so that's where we are at.
So we couldn't do it with any other schools, even if this is successful? It's just the parameters and the?
Not, not for this particular challenge.
We could do it, it doesn't, it's the cost effectiveness.
But also you have a payback period. What, what is that, 12 years or?
It, it, we calculated a, a payback period of, I think, 11 to 12 years for Seven Bridges.
11, okay.
And that just was far and away the best site to consider for this.
And did you actually calculate the other schools?
We did. Uh, do you remember, John, what the stage one for the other school came up with? I apologize, that was over a year ago now.
But, but, but they did not qualify.
Yeah, it wasn't qualified.
It's a calculon form, calculation.
We didn't even, we didn't even submit the elementary schools because we just, they are media required.
I'm wondering about Bell and the high school.
If I recall, it might have been around 50% higher.
Yes.
I'm just curious, I'm not really suggesting.
And there's a lot of factors that go into the payback. It's a lot about what the school's currently using, how it's, the HVAC system they're currently using, how old it is, um, and how the, how, how a geothermal system can integrate into the facility. It's a lot of factors.
I think, John, we can do anything we want to do, it's just the payback and how it's going to cost us.
Yep.
Yeah, how's it going to affect the budget? Now, the, the facilities committee felt, when the payback was reasonable, it's also one of the things that came to you, that will come into the whole board is because to do the site analysis, it's not inexpensive, let's put it that way. It's going to be, it's a large expense. If it turns out that, um, we, it's not feasible for some reason, unknown reason at, at this point, um, it would be an expense to the district that we'd have to cover. Um, it's still going to be expensive to the district, but if we proceed with the project, um, they will also finance that and all the cost of that, um, study into the payback for the turn.
It seems like an excellent project, so it makes sense to.
I mean, it touches pretty much all the hot buttons. It's fiscally responsible, it's environmentally responsible, it's an educational part to it that, you know, for the students.
And also sustainability.
I'd like to take 5.14 out of order right now, so we can discuss it. So, can I have 5.14? Whereas, pursuant to Section 1,005.17 of New York Public Authorities Law, the New York Power Authority, NYPD, is authorized to finance and design, develop, construct, implement and provide energy-related projects, programs, and services for public entities. And whereas, New York Public Authorities, through its, Power Authority, through its Energy Services Program, ESP, has proposed by letter dated February 28, 2019, to perform an ASHRAE Level 2 Targeted Geothermal Energy Audit and 30% Design at Seven Bridges Middle School, to determine potential cost savings, energy conservation measures, and to evaluate geothermal heating and cooling system at that school at a cost of the audit and design not to exceed $180,000. And whereas, the Board urges to accept the NYPD proposal for such audit and design services at the school. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board authorizes Dr. Christine Ackerman, Superintendent Schools, sign the February 28, 2019 proposal letter to commence a mini-bid process to determine the actual cost of the audit, copy of which letter is incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting. And be it further resolved, that the Board President is hereby authorized to execute a master cost recovery agreement with NYPD, setting forth the agreements, set forth the terms and conditions of the audit and design services to be provided by the NYPD, the school district regarding Seven Bridges Middle School, as described above, a copy of which agreement is incorporated by references within the meetings of the minute. I will move 5.14.
Second. That was mouthful.
That was a mouthful. Any discussion or any questions?
I think it's a great idea.
So, I mean, I think it's an excellent idea to explore the feasibility. I know that it's a little bit of a risk if it doesn't work out, and it's not an substantial amount of money, but I think that it's worthwhile to explore. But one question I did have was when you were reading that, you were saying that we were going to authorize the Board President to make the agreement, but on the paperwork and the backup, it has Christine's name.
There too. Christine's going to sign the.
Okay, so I'm missing the other one in my, oh, there, I found it. Okay, sorry. They were in reverse order in my folder.
And sometimes once in a while, that happens in the backup document.
Yeah, no, they were just reversed.
The people drawing up the contract don't really know, so then it gets fixed when the Board President goes to sign.
Also, I think we just want to ask one question about, in the document, there's wording that mini-bid. So, let's, we'll ask them to explain what mini-bid.
So, NIPA has pre-qualified a number of firms that are qualified to perform the feasibility study, the ASHRAE Level 2 Targeted Audit and Design Study. We would, upon your approval of the authorization to proceed, we would do a little mini-bid. We call it a mini-bid because we've already pre-qualified the firms, but internally, we talked to each one of them about, for this particular site and for the site characteristics here, what would be the cost of performing the scope of that? And then we would be able to really kind of determine the best, lowest-cost quality.
Right, so it's like approved vendors in a certain way.
Yeah, we issued an RFQ, and now we're going to determine who has the best price and who's qualified.
Could you do that with like blindly, not with a workshop or whatever, before they price it?
Also, can you talk a little bit about, you would take care of the state ad approval, the application, you know, the form for approval, and then also, there's a component for the building aid piece?
Yeah, so that whole process of applying through SED with the permitting is something that we do as part of our implementation package. So, all of that permitting, we file on your behalf, and through other programs that we run, we have ability to encourage them to move a little bit quicker than normal if we need to, to get those approvals.
How do you do that?
Yeah.
I'm really curious.
Expedited permitting partners.
Okay, all right.
I'm not sure if you guys, how much you measure, but in terms of where it's going to be located and disruption to our fields, initially, the thought process is in the front of the building, in the field in the front of the building. It wouldn't be big, I mean, it'd be deep dig, but it wouldn't be a big disruption to that field. And then ultimately, at the end of the process, you would not notice that it even existed.
The field would be recovered the way it was today. The system would exist under that.
How long does it take to build?
The full implementation of this, I would guess, would be about a six-month project.
So, you would start maybe in the summer?
Probably. If we had to do the, once we get, for actually, this audit phase, there's going to be one test, what's called a geotechnic test well done. And that would give us a lot of information about what's below the ground, what kind of resource the ground can provide. That would design how big the actual well would need, how many wells would need to be used for the geothermal system itself. And depending on the time of year, those can be, in this climate, they can be drilled pretty much any time of year.
What kind of disruption will that have to our students?
I think it would be, if there was school in session, I think the field where the system would go would pretty much be off limits for, you know, probably about six weeks or so.
And are the wells actually on the fields, within the border of the fields or beyond?
We've identified that as a really good location for them.
You're talking about the lower field?
Yeah, yeah, in the front of the building.
During the design process, we can work to identify potential other locations and look to see where the best place would be for the wellfields.
So, six weeks, we start July 1?
But the reality is that they have to have SED approval before they can actually start the work. You know, the testing part, they can do anytime. But, you know, with the SED even expedited, I don't think they can start until probably after the season's over. So, I'm talking about December.
Maybe the winter might be the best time.
Can you drill in winter?
I think they can. They're going down, you know, 200 to 500 feet through the well.
So, once they're through the first four feet.
So, what exactly is going on underground? Because, you know, you're installing some equipment down there, and then kids are going to be playing on top of it, you know, running on top of it. So, I'm just wondering what the risk is if something should erupt or explode? Is there a risk of that?
Not, there's no pressure. It's not a pressurized system. So, what you have is, there's actually eight of these wells drilled underneath the St. Patrick's Cathedral in Manhattan, and they supply all of the thermal energy for the St. Patrick's Cathedral. They went actually down through the streets in Manhattan. It's not a pressurized system. What happens is you drill these wells, they're about eight inches or so in diameter. A pipe is inserted in the well that creates a closed loop. So, this is a plastic pipe of industrial-grade plastic. Water or another, like glycol, is circulated through that well up to about four feet from the grade level, from the ground, to another well, and then it circulates around all the wells, picking up the thermal resource of the ground. That's piped again, four feet underground, underneath the field, to a head system that would be off the field. So, the field itself, you wouldn't even know anything was under there. It'd be significantly below the playing surface. There's no pressurized components or anything, so you wouldn't even know it was there.
So, it's just getting it done before the kids use the field?
And the other thing that we asked the Facilities Committee, really of job more than these gentlemen, is that our old system will still be in place as a backup if we need it, and for some reason, it's not providing enough heat. We can always go back to gas.
That's correct. And these systems also come fully warranted too, if there was a leak or something like that.
So, I did the numbers. I mean, it's 15,000th of a percent of our budget, right? So, it's not that, I mean, 180,000 is a lot of money, but I think, like anything else, we're going to see a, get a cost benefit out of this, so.
Well, it's the only way to get it done.
Right.
And we would, and if, during the design process, we felt there was something we missed immediately during the test well sampling, we found out, you know, we determined that it might be a 15- or 18-year payback and not a 11- or 12-year payback. We would opt out and tell you right away and not reach that, you know, the 200 exceed amount.
So, we can make, so we can come up with other decisions.
At any point, we can stop it, but.
Of course. But if there's a fatal flaw identified, we could stop the work at that particular point.
Any other discussion? I think it's a good, I think it's a great idea. All in favor?
Thank you both for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was very entertaining.
Thank you, Thomas.
Anybody in the public have questions for me? All right, sorry, I guess.
Warren, he has a question.
Do I? Should we do public comments?
Committee reports.
Policies are on the agenda.
Policy committee this morning.
We don't have a communications committee report.
No.
We're going to table one of the policies right at the top. We have a couple of policies on the agenda. We're going to table one of the policies when we get there, and we've got a little more work to do. Facilities?
Well, we've already discussed a lot of facilities stuff here tonight. Just, I would just note that we have a Facilities Committee meeting tomorrow, May 9, at 5:00 PM, at the Ed Center, generally in the lower conference room.
We're going to have it on the first floor.
I meant that, I meant lower, meaning not the second floor. First floor conference room, make a right when you come to the door. And we promise to go less time than we did tonight.
Anything else? Nope. Okay, now I'll take public comment. We welcome public comments, and in respect to each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may be contacted via phone or email. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding the comments presented. Anyone from the committee who'd like to make a comment? Please come up and state your name.
Hi, good evening, I'm Debbie Jacobs. I brought my team, of course. I'm Debbie Jacobs. We've actually talked on the phone several times, hi. I was here about eight months ago, as you said, I know you're having a Facilities Committee meeting, I think it's tomorrow, and then there's another meeting next week, but I just wanted to get like an actual status on the plan for each school and the building plan for the heat alleviation, just because it's been a long time, and I know you guys are working hard, and we appreciate it, and we appreciate that everyone's taking the time to do so. But, you know, we're in May, it's been eight months, and we're just concerned because it's starting to get really hot.
I'll answer a question only because Christine already answered it earlier tonight.
Okay.
We're going to have a presentation here at least.
Next meeting, May 29.
May 29 meeting.
Okay.
The presentation will be by people who didn't know about what the status of each plans, the plans are.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, I appreciate that. Okay. Thank you. Did you want to say something really quick? You can, hurry up, you're going to go back.
You can do it.
Come on, come on up.
You waited so long. You can't shy out of it.
All right, that's all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you need another copy of any of the petitions and such? Because we are getting lots of comments from parents and such. Do you need it? You have everything, right?
Yeah, we have.
You have all our plans, you have it? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the committee? Hold on a second, please. We're trying to get the lights on.
There we go.
You want to go up to her?
Does she want to say something?
She wants to say something, now, whenever. Everybody's tired.
You know, you can say them there.
Say it here, Cory. Guys, McKenzie, Jacob, when you go to school, why are sorcerers and what are you doing? Kinder, what do you want in class?
I think she's.
Karen Visser.
Okay, next comment.
Karen Visser, I just wanted to say thank you to the board and to the administration for moving graduation. Jay and I both have kids that are going to be graduating next year, and so I'm looking forward that it's not going to be on Father's Day and that we are actually going to be able to celebrate. So, I really appreciate that you guys are doing this and that you had a big discussion about it. And wow, I had not seen those kids at my house for a long time, and they have really grown. So, anyways, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you.
Young Mr. Jacobs for a comment?
Do you want to comment? We have chat.
Okay, I don't.
Wait, can we just, we can have a discussion amongst ourselves? Can I just share with you something?
Yes.
So, I know we're going to talk about this on May 29, but there's no heat alleviation plans in the state of New York, so this is a complicated process. This isn't something that's easy. We have hourly requirements, and when we get into the summer, if we don't hit our hourly requirements, we, our state aid, state aid is impacted, so it's not, like I can say, if it's X amount of degrees outside, we're going to close school, or we're going to close school early, because that could extend the school year. So, this is not something that we can just simply put together without an extraordinarily amount of thinking around it. Even when working with our partners, BOSIs, it's, we're trying to figure this out as we move forward. So, I just want to acknowledge that while I understand that people are waiting for us and they feel like it's been a long time, this is not an easy process for us to be engaged in, so we'll present where we are at our next meeting.
I really appreciate that you guys are kind of breaking the ground on this because it's not going to get cooler in the summers, and right now, I think this is our best option. But I did want to ask if we'll have an update on the state of the others that we had talked about, the air conditioner in the kitchen, it clearly, and monitoring the temperature in some of the other spaces.
So, we're going to address all of that in our next presentation.
Yeah, Christine, you said we couldn't, I get, you know, we can't just say, hey, you're out of here, don't worry about it. But we do have a certain number of snow days. I don't believe, just for an example, this year, I don't know if we've used them all.
We have not used them all, but what happens is, let's say we have a snow event like last year, and then I've used all our snow days, and I, we get into summer, and then all of a sudden, we have five days in a row that, whereas it's excessive heat, I can't dismiss early because I'm not going to meet the hourly requirements for the elementary schools.
We can't count on those days being there, it's one year.
Right, and it's really at the elementary level that's problematic, because the high school, middle schools, you can use the exam schedules to have a earlier release days. So, it's very complicated. It would have been easier if we were following the 180-day regulation. We have that regulation on top of an hourly requirement, so I just can't say we're going to dismiss early.
Wasn't the hourly more recent? That was, when was that, like the last year?
That was last year. That's why even in trying to figure out when eighth-grade graduation was going to be this year, because I allowed it to be the week early, trying to consider people's camp schedules, I couldn't, I couldn't say we're going to have an early release until we got through the winter. So, it's not, it's complicated.
Just another state unthoughts mandated.
That's, it's true, it is true. So, I just want to share that with you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, item 3.1, have a motion be resolved, Board of Education, except for the minutes of April 23, 2019, Board of Education, may I add, item 3.2 also be resolved, Board of Education, except for the minutes of April 25, 2019, special.
I'll move, oh, go ahead.
I'll move 3.1 and 3.2.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 3.3, I'd like to put on the table, item 3.3, District use of credit card, like I said before, during committee report. We have a little bit more work to do on that, we're getting close, but we have to. So.
I'll second it. Move to the table.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 3.4, Policy 5100, education of students in foster care, second, reading and adoption.
There's really no changes to this. I mean, it's all, it's all, it's all regulation.
It's all state regulation, right?
Does anyone move it?
No, yeah. We have a motion for 3.4.
I'll move 3.4.
So, I have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item 4.1, instructional personnel.
Can I, I'll recommend 4.1 as presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's motion, recommendation of item 4.1.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I recommend 4.2, non-instructional, as presented.
I recommend that we accept the superintendent's motion for move item 4.2, as recommended.
You move?
Do you move it?
I move it.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I just want to say goodbye to Fran at Roaring Brook, because she's been there forever, and we really appreciate it, and we'll be sad to see her go, and we wish her a happy retirement.
Yeah.
That's all I want to say.
The exact same comment.
Okay, I'd like to take 5.1 and 5.2.
Wait, we have to, we have to, all in favor?
All in favor? I'm sorry.
Aye.
You guys are all.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to accept, take item 5.1 and 5.2 together, CSC Summer Research Report to the Board on May 8. We have a motion for 5.1 and 5.2 together.
I'll move 5.1 and 5.2.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 5.3, whereas the Chappaqua Central School District participates in New York State Retirement Teacher System, TRS, and whereas on August 11, 2009, the Board of the Board of Education by resolution established a Retirement Contribution Reserve Fund, known as Retirement Contribution Reserve Fund, pursuant to Section 6-R of the General Municipal, Municipal Law, and whereas the Board of Education has determined that it is also appropriate to establish a sub-fund within the said Retirement Contribution Reserve Fund pursuant to the provisions of Section 6-R of the General, General Municipal Law. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education of Chappaqua Central School District pursuant to Section 6-R of the General Municipal Law hereby establishes a sub-fund within the Retirement Contribution Reserve Fund to be known as Chappaqua School District Retirement Contribution Reserve Sub-Fund, finance retirement contributions to New York State Teachers' Retirement System, and/or to offset all portion of the amount deducted from the money's apportioned to the district from the state for the support of schools pursuant to Section 521 of the Ed Law. I will move 5.3.
Wait, could you repeat that?
I, I will, I will second.
Of Ed Law?
I will second 5.3.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I, I just wanna say thank you very much to David Buckwald, our representative, who introduced this two years ago, he had a bill and it, you know, did not pass, and he, you know, kept working on it, uh, with some other legislators, I just wanna thank them for, for their work on this.
I'd like to reiterate thanking David Buckwald, um, I know he's talked to us about it, and has been very supportive of a lot of, uh, a lot of the things our district and like districts here in Westchester have supported, and I appreciate that, and also, just a quick question, this doesn't mean we're funding it, it just means we're establishing it.
That's right.
Right, I was gonna ask John to give like a short explanation.
Well, we already have a retirement, uh, employee retirement, uh, reserve fund, so this is a subset, and the original fund is only allowed to reserve for ERS, and our ERS salary is really representing about 16% of our total salaries, so this is actually the big piece, but this is just establishment, we have to have excess funds to fund it, otherwise, but, but this is just...
But it allows us to put it in that fund, okay.
So, the fund, any, any decision to fund it will come next to his budget season, or just sometime during the year, or?
It's just anytime at the end of the school year, if you have excess funds, you can put it in there.
Surplus, that we can put it in there to fund, great, okay.
Is that done by, is that done by Board Resolution?
Like, to move the funds in there, I mean?
Yes, it is.
I'm not sure.
You just can't take funds and move them, that we'd have to have a Board Resolution to do that, correct? Because what will be money?
There's nowhere you can...
I'm not sure, because when we established, uh, uh, capital reserve funds, excess funds could just go indirectly, and I'm not sure about this.
So, does the money, does the money have to come out of the contribution reserve fund to go into the sub-fund, or can it just go right into the sub-fund?
No, just go into the total fund, and then there, there'll be a sub-fund.
So, and then we just allocate?
Right.
Okay.
We can find out from, from the answers to that question, I'll send you an email. I don't think it'll impact the resolution, it'll just impact how we, uh... Okay.
I just also wanna, wanna put in a plug for all those people who were advocating for this for a long time, and especially the Lower Hudson Education Coalition, which you might be getting more information on, um, because it's been restructured, and we have a new lobbyist working, um, for the coalition, which represents the Westchester, Putnam, Dutchess, and Rockland Counties, and also the whole superintendent's group associated with those four counties, so that's the Lower Hudson Education Coalition, and they, we do a lot of advocacy work, so I just want people to be aware, because not everyone is aware of all of the different groups doing the different functions, so they do a lot of advocacy on our behalf, and this was a big part of, um, the priorities.
Yeah, so, just, just as a compliment to them, they send us updates occasionally, like, semi-ano, that are very detailed, and I appreciate that.
Just so, just we know when, when the bills come in and we pay dues, just so everyone knows what the dues are for, and that actual, you know, real work goes on, because it's not, not something we always talk about, so just to be aware.
All in favor?
Could I ask my question, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I kept trying. Uh, John, is there going to be a maximum, or a, a limit to what can be in this fund? In this sub-fund?
There are limits, yeah.
There is no maximum, but I think when the audit is done, when it's done by our external auditor, or by the, uh, OSC, they always think about the reasonableness, you know, if you, if your total liability is X, and you have 10 times of X, that would not be reasonable.
But for this one, John, I think there is, I, I can't remember now, but I, I think it's 10, it can't exceed 10% of the TRS salaries in the district, and it can't go up...
Is that in there?
I think it's in there, um, something like that.
We, we can find out.
And also, it cannot increase more than 2% every year. Don't hold me to those numbers, but I think there are limitations as to the total percentage and the percentage in annual increase.
My problem with this is that I've seen so many versions of it, because our association has been pushing, and there were numbers flying all over the place, so I'm not sure what was the final...
Well, that's true, maybe I figured it out somewhere else.
I really don't know what was the final, uh...
Right, I, I think what I'm saying was before it was signed by the governor, so you may be right, I...
I, I don't know.
But I thi, I think there are limits to it.
We'll find out.
Yeah, we'll find out.
So, there is, but it's more imposed by the law, not by...
You can get a one-page summary.
We'll get a summary from our attorneys.
Yeah, that would be helpful, that, what it allows us to do and not, that would be great.
Actually, David sent us something, huh?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, 5.1, 5.4, be resolved, Board of Education approves a gift from Seven Bridges Middle School, PTA, in the amount of $1,982.18 for the purchase and installation of foosball and air hockey tables in the cafeteria.
Sounds like fun.
I'll move 5.4.
I'll second 5.4.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Oh, thank you, it sounds great, it sounds like fun.
If you need testers, let us know.
Right.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
5.5, be resolved, Board of Education approves a Putnam, Northern Westchester, BOSsies, 2019-2020 contract of services in the amount of $1,255,333, and authorizes the Board President and District Clerk to execute this agreement.
I move, uh, I'll move that, uh, item 5.5, BOSsies contract for services.
I'll second.
This is not, this is, this is separate...
This is not their budget.
This is a part of the allocation, this is a pay-as-you-go, um, and, uh, this is part of the good part of the...
This is for the services.
Right, this is not administrative. All in favor?
Aye.
5.6, be resolved, Board of Education approves a contract for health and welfare services with the White Plains School District for 13 students at a rate of $1,076.08 per student for the 2018-2019 school year, and authorizes the President, Superintendent, and District Clerk to execute the contract. The President's Board, the Defense Clerk.
Yeah, you, we'll get a, what's his name?
I move 5.6, a second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
5.7, be resolved, Board of Education approves an agreement for health and welfare services with the Union Free School District of the Tarry Towns for 27 students, at a rate of $1,011.49 per student for the 2018-2019 school year, and authorizes the Board President to execute this agreement.
I move 5.7.
I'll second 5.7.
And just a quick question, John, just to confirm, the reason we're getting these so late is not be, the reason we're approving them so late in the year is because we're getting delayed coming to us from the...
That's correct.
Okay.
All in favor? 5.8, be resolved, Board of Education approves an agreement with Student Assistant Services for 2019-2020 school year for a five-day-per-week Student Assistant Project Success program in Harskewell High School in the amount of $74,150, and authorizes the Board President to execute this agreement. I have a motion for 5.8.
I move 5.8.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
This is 5.8, Christine, I sent, I sent a number of questions.
Get them to fashion.
I'm sorry, um, and I, we actually like to request that we table this until we're able to, um, gather some more information on that program to answer my questions.
Do you wanna share what your questions are?
Yes, if I... Sorry about that.
Right, and I, I think the, the issue is Holly's questions came after I was able to, after everyone had left for the day today, so I might, I wasn't able to get the information before the meeting, so...
Yeah, so, um, I, I wanted to know how many years, uh, this program had been in place, do we have, um, some data specific to Greeley, um, and the number of students that have been involved in the program, and how much is reactive versus proactive with the students?
This program has been here at least 13 years, because since I've been here, this, this has been here, and we have the same, um, counselor during those years.
The, the letter was just very generic, and I was hoping to get some more specific information, um, for how it's benefiting us, but...
Definitely answer all those questions, that's not a problem.
But if, but, I mean, you guys can still...
Is, is it time-sensitive? Um, so, I would share with you that this position's really important to Greeley, and the person in this position is critical to the community, so whether or not you approve this position tonight, or you move on the position in May, I don't want, um, the impression to be that we don't recognize the value of this program here in our district, so, um, it, I, I, I have no problem gathering more information if that's what makes people feel comfortable before approving this person in this role, but this is a longstanding, established position with, um, many students who are connected individually to her for support, so I don't, I don't want people to get the wrong impression that, um, this position's in jeopardy by tabling it, that's the only concern that I have.
I'm not sure if this is time-sensitive, but usually this, this particular resolution is usually approved either in March or April, and this year it is really late on their part, because they, they didn't get the state-approved rate, because this is state-supported program on their side, so we pay a portion of it, and the state also pays the other portion, so, I'm not sure, because they are also, you know, this organization is serving, um, a lot of other school districts, and they have to line up all their personnel, so I don't know the deadline, but...
And honestly, I, I think it's...
I would suggest to approve, and then we'll get the information later, because this is not a new program, that's my view.
Yeah, I think maybe I would just like to learn more about the program, it sounds like there's not really a question as to whether or not we would continue it, but I, I would just like to understand better, um, the impact that it's having, especially in, in the context of all the other, um, programs we have in place, just to understand.
Yeah, I, I mean, again...
Is a motion on table, do we wanna table that motion, or do we wanna vote on it?
Well, I, I just wanna say that, I think, I think it's, um...
No, no, there's a motion on the table to vote on it.
Yes, correct.
There's a motion on the table to vote, and then there's discussion.
Well, whatever it is, whatever it is, I, I would like to say that I think it's important for board members to know, you know, what they're voting on, what, and what, what we're approving, but there's a balance in that, um, because we, you know, the school district needs our approval to function, so I think that if it's something new, or something that is really in question, then I'm comfortable with tabling an item, but if it's just for our own edification, or, and we don't know, so for instance, Holly, you're, you know, this is your first year on the Board, so maybe you haven't heard of the program, and you should know about it, um, but, you know, in all fairness, your question came in today, which is okay, but I'm not sure that that would meet a standard for stopping, uh, for, for not approving a program, that needs to happen.
Yeah.
So, I think we need to balance our need to understand, uh, what we're approving with the needs of the school district to, to function, so I'm just thinking in terms of if we did this on a regular basis for things that we just wanted to understand more about, then that would cause, that would cause a problem.
Well, but, I, I mean, I understand that it's been a, a longstanding program, but I, I'm also of the belief that just because we've done something for a long time, that we automatically would continue, I'm not sure that this one is something that I would be object to just continuing, even though it's been there for a long time, but the information that was provided in the backup was just very generic, so it, without more context, um, I, I couldn't, um, make the, um, assessment as to whether it was something that we were just continuing to do because we've been doing it, or if the value in the program is there. I think that that's been answered, that in, in this meeting, that yes, um, there, there is value, and there is not a reason to question continuing, um, so I think what, I, I don't, I'm not suggesting that we table it now that I have that information, but I do wanna follow up and get more, um, of an understanding of the program and how, how it's successful.
As a board member, you should, so...
So, is there a motion to table on the table?
There's a motion, we have a second.
No.
No.
Okay, so there is no motion.
We had a motion, we moved to...
There was only a request, but there was no motion.
We seconded to discuss this, discuss this, but then Holly said maybe we can table it, so that was part of the discussion, but we never went to table it.
Right, okay.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
We took 5.9 already, 5.10, be resolved, Board of Education approves CCSD bid B-2017-9 Field Maintenance Services Recommended, Recommended Award to Maxner Landscaping LLC in the amount of $110,000, plus alary rates for the 2019-2020 school year. Do I have a motion for 5.10?
I move 5.10.
I'll second.
Second?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Be resolved, Board of Education approves CCSD bid 2019-6 Solid Waste Services for Buildings Owned by the Chappaqua Central School District and the Town of Newcastle, Recommended Award to Santa Pro Disposal slash DBA Suburban Carding in the amount of $103,980 for the 2019-2020 school year.
I'll move item 5.11.
I'll take, I'll second 5.11.
A quick question, John, this is, you checked it, is this what that is?
Right.
And this is a second bid, and, uh, the bid actually came in $20,000 less than the first one.
Right, that was my question, too.
But, but still the increase, but, uh, that is trend, uh...
Okay, all right. But you're comfortable with the amount?
And we only have one, one bid, so...
Okay, well, that rejection worked.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
5.12, be resolved, Board of Education approves CCSD bid 2019-8 Drivers' Education, Recommended Award to PAS Auto School at $465 per student for the summer and fall, summer fall and spring sessions of the 2019-2020 school year. I will move 5.12.
I second.
Any discussion? Good luck to our drivers, Ed students. All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck to instructors.
Another example of something you've been doing.
Item 5.13, be resolved, Board of Education approves a contract with PAS Auto School for the 2019-2020 school year, and authorizes the Board President to execute this agreement. I will move 5.13.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We already took 5.14. 5.15, be, whereas the district owns the attached list of items which are no more useful or necessary for the school district purposes and of no value to the school district, therefore be resolved, the Board hereby declares such items to be surplus property and of no value to the school district, and authorizes disposal of such equipment in a prudent manner in accordance with the law.
I'll move 5.15.[1683.02]
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
5.16, be resolved, Board of Education approves the employment of election personnel to the May 21st, 2019 budget, school vote, and election. I'll move 5.16. Do you have a second?
I second 5.16.
Any discussion?
Yep, I'd like to acknowledge our chief election inspector.
Go Lisa.
I'd also like...I'd also like to thank all the volunteers who does a great job.
And the chairman, people, Amanda and Christine.
Yeah, thank you to all the volunteers who help us run the election, PTA, the League of Women Voters, and all the PTA and other parent and community volunteers. We couldn't do it without you.
So speaking of legal women voters, I spoke to Mary Kirsch tonight, and the Legal Women Voters...Voters Guide is supposed to be out late this afternoon in the evening, so they said it should be on their website or their Facebook page.
Oh, great, okay.
What is it?
The Voters Guide.
The Legal Women Voters Voters Guide. I skipped over that in my presentation.
Yes, you should say. Cancel it, it's late.
All...all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
5.17, be resolved, Board of Education approves the use of Phoenix Graphics for the printing and binding of the ballots for the May 21st, 2019 annual election vote at the cost of $50...$50...$50 cents each, it sounds like $50, which is expensive, including delivery. I'll move 5.17.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
That's a very expensive...
Yeah.
I wonder what happened if you said no.
Yeah, what would happen if we didn't approve that?
I don't know. Let's not find out.
Balance for the voting machines.
Okay.
That's why people didn't want the new voting machines.
We didn't want the new voting machines. The voting machines cost $50 a vote.